City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for March 20, 2023. Thank you for being here. We have three business items on our agenda tonight. Number one is a report on Google Fiber. Our second item is the C-Dot greenhouse gas rule. And our third is transportation funding.
I don't all go grab it.
We will start our meeting as we usually do with public's right to speak on any item that is on the agenda. So I don't have anyone signed up to speak. But if you haven't signed up and you would like to speak, you may do so now. Come to the podium. And if you are joining us online, if you'd raise your hand, we will bring you into the meeting. I will check with our clerk and see if anyone has raised their hand. Okay, we will move past our citizens' right to speak and go to agenda item number one. This is a discussion on Google Fiber right-of-way use. Mr. Goff, do you have a report on this one?
Yes, we do. I'll turn it over to Maria. Maria has all three items this evening. But we have some guests here from Google Fiber. Let all of her introduce those folks.
Director D'Andrea, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Yes, tonight, our first agenda item. We brought in a couple representatives from Google Fiber to talk about this potential initiative within the city. It is quite exciting. And they're going to give some more specifics about the installation process, exactly what this means for Wheat Ridge or you as a homeowner or business owner. And then we'd be happy to talk about any questions related to logistics or any of the other matters. This would be brought back to you with a potential right-of-way agreement, which we've been working on. And we anticipate sometime in the future, if we can come to agreement on those terms, that that would come before you for formal action. So with that, I'll introduce Lewis Liptner, who's the head of Strategic Partnerships, and Jason Bone, who's the head of Regional Technical Operations.
How's this? Is this on? Good, okay.
Great. Well, thank you, Director D'Andrea and City Manager Goff, for working with us to get to this point. And thank you for the council and mayor for making time today to hear about our project. We have some prepared remarks, but as Maria said, we're happy to answer any questions that you have as we go through or at the end. At Google Fiber, our mission is to help communities get access to internet that's fast, reliable, and fairly priced. Sometimes people have questions about how we are related to Google, the very large company that everybody knows, or Alphabet. And the answer is that we're a wholly owned subsidiary of Alphabet, though we operate independently of that company. Google Fiber started in 2010 with the goal of demonstrating how a fiber network could change the internet landscape for customers and push the industry to do better. At a time when average download speeds were 10 megabits per second and upload speeds a fraction of that, we launched a product that was 100 times faster with symmetrical download and upload speeds. These were enabled by 100% fiber optic network all the way into customers' homes. Today, we're part of an industry where the gig speeds that we pioneered have become table stakes. We still pride ourselves on the speed of our networks. And you'll see here on this slide that Hyspeedinternet.com has rated Google Fiber the fastest internet provider in the nation in 2022. But our goals go beyond speed. We're looking to provide an industry-leading customer service experience, and third-party evaluators have given our company high marks. You'll see here that CNET, which is a leading consumer tech publication, has called Google Fiber "as good as gig internet gets" and "the best no-contract service provider for 2022." At Google Fiber, we believe that all internet should be simple. People love the things that they can do on the internet, where they can go, what they can learn, and who they can connect with. Internet service that's too slow, complicated, or unreliable can really get in the way. But we love making that experience simple, from signing up in a few clicks to install appointments with very specific appointment times, easy transparent billing, and when you need it, customer service. Providing something that feels like a simple experience for customers isn't simple for us to deliver, but that's exactly what we're trying to achieve. We focus on the operations, experience, and the technology, and customers focus on what they need and want to do online. Here you can see an overview of our current product lineup. We're going to be adding an eight-gigabit speed connection soon, and we've even started testing for up to 20 gigabits in Kansas City earlier this year. Our price for the one-gig product, which is our flagship product, was $70 a month when we launched in Kansas City in 2012, and it's still $70 a month today. You'll notice that there are no TV plans on this slide because we are a broadband company. Customers who want to watch live content can stream that over their fiber connection, and that's a really great experience for them. We also have some educational programs and kind of materials to help folks for whom that's not a natural first choice make those decisions to get the content that they want. One major differentiating factor that fiber allows us to deliver are the symmetrical download and upload speeds. That means you can send information over the internet as quickly as you can receive it. As the ways we use the internet every day become more and more interactive, upload speeds are more and more critical for a home user to have a great experience. Everything you do will go much faster: uploading large files, gaming without lag, and video calls. Across the board, we do a lot of things differently than traditional ISPs. We don't have contracts. We don't have hidden fees. We don't have promotional rates that change after a few months or one year. We don't have a special rental fee for your router, and we don't cap the amount of data that you use. We want you to use as much internet as you want. We see it as our goal to keep earning customers' trust month over month and year over year. We also believe that everyone should have access to a great symmetrical fiber connection. And so we're enthusiastic participants in the National Affordable Connectivity Program. This program allows a subsidy for $30 a month for qualifying households. And there's an income threshold that's set nationally. By the time we launch in Colorado, we expect to have a product that will be priced at $30 a month, so it would be effectively free for consumers who meet the thresholds. Most of us use Wi-Fi almost exclusively to connect our devices in the home. And that's why we're committed to providing a great in-home experience for customers. We provide the equipment that you need at no additional cost to set up a mesh network that will blanket your home with Wi-Fi. We regularly update our roadmap so that we're delivering the latest and greatest technology to customers for the routers that they use in their home to deliver Wi-Fi. Customers choose, they can also use their own router. We also provide business products with a focus on the small and medium business market. Today, we provide a one-gig product and a two-gig product, and the two-gig product comes with a 99.9% reliability guarantee. And if we don't deliver on that, we'll credit a portion of customers' bill back. Again, we see it as our mission to keep earning customers' trust month over month. We understand that there is choice in the marketplace. As you've seen from the brief overview of our products, Google Fiber is committed to being at the leading edge of speed and customer experience. From our inception, our entry to new markets has also served as a force for incumbent competitors to up their games. When we announced we were coming to Kansas, and you see on this slide a quote from the FCC, "Speeds on existing networks surged 97%, the largest year-over-year jump in bandwidth observed in any state ever." That wasn't because we were serving all those customers yet. It takes time to build the network. But it was because the mere announcement that fiber-to-the-home was coming to Kansas unleashed a competitive race for incumbent providers to increase speeds and service and lower prices. Today, Google Fiber operates in 16 states across 25 metros. Over the last several years, we've been expanding meaningfully in our initial round of cities. But during the last year, we've had a few exciting announcements in new states. We expanded to Mesa and Chandler, Arizona, Omaha, Nebraska, Des Moines, Iowa, and Westminster and Lakewood in Colorado. We've had a presence in the city of Denver through our Google Fiber Web Pass company since 2017. That business serves tall, multifamily buildings with wireless radio connectivity that also allows symmetrical gigabit speeds. But if you're not in downtown Denver, you might not have heard of it. Our projects in Westminster and Lakewood are more similar to the project we would be proposing here at Wheat Ridge, which is to build a fiber-to-the-home network in the public right-of-way to enable service to the vast majority of the city. My colleague Jason Bone is going to tell you a little bit more about our plans that are in motion for Westminster and Lakewood in a couple of slides. But right now, we're hard at work designing the network. We're planning to start construction in Lakewood first over the summer, with serving our first customers in early 2024. When we enter a new community, we also seek to do our part to get more people online and help them take advantage of what the internet has to offer. That's why we support programs and organizations in each of our Google Fiber cities that teach digital literacy skills, promote STEM education, and provide faster internet to more people. We know there's not a one-size-fits-all solution for bridging the digital divide, and we look forward to making local partners who are already working on these issues to help them amplify their impact and their message and reach in the community. Now I'm going to kick it over to Jason to talk a little bit about our deployment methods.
Thanks, Louis. So when we go into a new city, it's a pretty big infrastructure project. And what we have done over the last several years is work to find the right solution that is really creates our ability to come in in a manner in which it's less disruptive to the community. And so we have what we like to call our Toolkit of Construction approach. And what that means is that we, based on the different street that we're in, mind you, we're going to be, you know, building out the vast majority of the city and try to serve every resident in the community. And so what we do is we try to find the right deployment method for the different streets and the different areas that we'll be building. And so the Toolkit approach that we think of is, the picture here that you can see is, this is what we call a micro trencher. And so it actually cuts a very narrow trench in the street to where we could lay our conduit down in the street, and then we fill that back up with a specialized mix that covers the trench. And so we use that as a toolkit. We also sometimes go behind the curb where it makes sense. Sometimes we do drill at a deeper depth, you know, depending on the type of street that we happen to be on. But all of this is to find the right mix to allow us to move in really quickly and minimize the disruption to residents. So our crews, a crew like this, can do about 2,000 feet a day. And so what we have often say, and this has proven time and time again, is that a lot of residents, when they're getting up to go to work in the morning, they might see our crews kind of mobilizing out in their streets. And then when they come home from work that day, where, you know, the majority of the construction's all completed, and then we just need to come back and do some splicing and testing in the network. And then after we do that, over the next month or two, then they're eligible to sign up, so they can go to our website and sign up for service. And then we'll get to that in a minute. But then that involves us, you know, actually running a cable to their home. So that's kind of our Toolkit approach. One of the things that's really important for us, and we know that it's important for a lot of the communities that we serve, is also is to make sure the residents are aware of what we're going to be doing when we get there. So it is a construction project. You know, it's digging, there's heavy machinery out in the streets. And so we work with the jurisdictions that we are building in to work on the communication with the community, you know, in the ways that makes most sense for the city. But part of that is also, we have signage out there. We also go to every home, and we put a door hanger on every home that gives a lot of information about what we're going to be doing, what they could expect, the timeframes, and also a phone number that they can call, which is to call us. We try to direct them to call us for the questions and not to call the city. So we try to be really proactive. And, you know, the other thing that we are hoping that a lot of these people become customers, so we're very motivated to try to make the disruption to their lives as minimal as possible so that they, you know, have a good experience, and then they sign up and be our customers. So we pay a lot of attention to that. And that phone number that we give is answered by a human 24 hours a day. And if there's any kind of issues that they have, which there undoubtedly are some issues, you know, we're out there digging in their yards and stuff like that in the right-of-way, but everybody feels like their yard goes all the way to the curb. So we have a team there that answers those calls and responds and opens tickets, and we resolve that really quickly. So. And then we try to make everything really easy for the subscriber. So once we've done this initial construction, then they are able to sign up on our website. We then, during the initial construction, will make an access point down at the curb near the street that has the fiber cable that is meant for their service to their home. And once they sign up for service, then we'll run a cable from that location to the side of their home. And then we schedule an installation appointment where we come into the home and get their service up and running. And we actually, it is an appointment. It's not like a time, and, you know, we'll be there between 1:00 and 5:00. We actually schedule an actual appointment and then show up and then get their service all hooked up and running. We also do do, mostly what I've been speaking about is the single-family homes, but we do serve multifamily homes as well. So if there's an apartment complex that wishes to take on our services, then we will work with the property owner. And it's a little bit different. We have to get a right-of-entry into their property, and so we work with them. We have a separate agreement with them. But then, once we build into their community, into their buildings, then those people can sign up just as a single-family home can as well.
So just to conclude, we're really excited about the possibility of coming to Wheat Ridge and bringing this amazing suite of broadband products and next-generation technology to the city and its residents and businesses. We look forward to continuing to work with staff to finalize our agreement and then coordinate on the project as we go and hopefully become members of the community. Jason and I are happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria, did you have anything else on this item?
No, we'll just open it up if there's any questions.
Okay, want to open it up to council for questions? We'll go with Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious. You probably know that Wheat Ridge has various stages of curb cuts and not curb cuts and plans for some streets to be redone in the next few years. And I was just curious, how will you deal with the fact that some of our infrastructure's underground, some of it has to go up on poles, then out of the ground to different houses? Is that, how do you sort of deal with that? Will it be only the homes that have curb cut and underground can be served right now? Or can you serve everyone?
Yeah.
Does that make any, we're sort of half rural and half urban, and it just sort of depends on the block?
Right. Yeah, no, we have a solution for whether there's curbs existing or not. And then even in areas where there may be some roadwork, maybe they're, when you say curb cut, like, maybe there's, like, you're thinking of, I think you're mentioning where there's not a curb or there's like a ditch instead of, yeah. So we do, we serve areas like that as well. So in some cases, we actually will build in the soft scape, but then sometimes we also do go in the street, and we have solutions to be able to serve those. And then when the city has an infrastructure project where maybe they're redoing the road or adding sidewalks or curbs, that's something that we work with the staff on. We'll have a full team here in the Denver region that will do utility coordination on projects like that. And so if there is a project like that, we'll, you know, identify where we're in conflict, and then we can reconstruct that street if the need arises. So, yeah.
But I could expect that I would be able to get this service even though I have overhead wires and a ditch in front of my house?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. These are a little more technical. So would this be considered micro trenching? And if so, what would the depth be?
So it is, the portion if we're in the street, we do call that micro trenching. And so the depth ranges, we talk about depth of cover, so like the depth, the amount of material on top of where the first cable sits. And so it's anywhere from eight to 12 inches deep.
Okay. I just ask because I know, like, my irrigation lines are about 12 inches below. And what do you do when you come across, like, existing little stuff like that? Because you're going to hit it.
We do hit irrigation lines. The reality is as we do, but all of our crews have repair equipment to repair irrigation lines on the spot.
That's good to hear. And then my other question is, what do you do when you come across a situation where the areas in, we have small right-ways in some of, at least where I live in the cities, and somebody has put, say, some type of retaining wall right next to the sidewalk, and technically it might be in the right-of-way. What do you do in that scenario?
So every scenario is a little unique. Sometimes we will, we can put it, if it is in the right-of-way, we can put it up on the top of the retaining wall, like up in the, not in the wall, but, you know, up at the top side. If there's space in between, we can put it down below, and then we can tunnel up and still be able to run a cable to their home. We do sometimes put stuff in sidewalks, although we try to avoid that. But then we also try to strategically place them. So if there's, if it's just like a couple of houses, we might strategically place our infrastructure in a place where we try to avoid those. So every street's a little bit different. And so on unique scenarios like that, we would work with the staff and create a permit drawing that the staff would review and approve. So we have a lot of different ways to kind of overcome those obstacles.
Thank you.
And I do want to say on the irrigation, we don't intentionally damage them all. We try to find those and locate them and avoid damaging them. But when we do, we fix those on the spot. Or if we happen to miss it, that 800 number that we provide will get us right back out there to get that repaired.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Nosler Beck?
I just wanted to ask a little bit more about the burying of fiber. And I'm assuming that, you know, we'll have some outages and things like that with our other providers because they're exposed to the elements, and so that probably burying is like one of the best ways to have, you know, the fibers be kept safe. But like, what are the main reasons for outages? And like, if you have those outages, how much of an impact is that on the infrastructure? Like, how long is it out for? And what are we, because we kind of know, like, oh, Wi-Fi is down at my house, but we know it'll come back up soon. Like, what does that feel like with this?
Yeah. So there's ways in which you can have an outage for both underground and aerial plants. So like, I also build in Austin, we just had a big ice storm you may or may not have heard of, where we had a bunch of power outages, and limbs fell on trees and knocked down a bunch of aerial plants. But then also, you know, people dig and damage this underground. We feel like the underground is a little bit safer, as you mentioned. So we have a full crew of repair technicians that are on call all the time. And so to your question on time, so our SLA for repairing a damage that, like, affects more than one customer is six hours. So if there, let's say, somebody is, you know, digging in their yard, or, you know, another utility provider is doing some sort of construction, or they're building a new driveway or something like that, and it does damage our cable, and we weren't informed where we could be proactive and get it out of the way first, then we'll have crews en route immediately. And while usually that's repaired in, you know, same day, within six to eight hours or so. If it's a single customer, like something in your yard, our SLA is one day. We'll get your service restored within one day.
Cool. And then I just, a follow-up question to that is, like, this technology is the, you know, cutting edge right now, but when do you all imagine that you would have to replace fibers and come through and do that kind of maintenance down the road?
Yeah. That's a good question. So the reality is, is in the technology of fiber optic cable, usually the speed at which, or the next evolution of it, is it has nothing to do with the actual fiber optic cable. It's more about the electronics on either end. So to give you an example, when we started serving customers back, you know, when we were doing this, you know, 10, 12 years ago, we were serving one-gig service on fiber optic cable. Now we're testing 20-gig service, and we're not changing anything as far as the infrastructure. What is changing is the electronics on either side, like the device that would go in the home needs to change, and then the electronics back at our facility need to change. But the actual fiber optic cable is the same.
So the user would get an upgraded, like, modem? I'm just using what I'm guessing would be that, but.
Right.
Okay.
That's right.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is definitely exciting to think about the future of Wheat Ridge being more connected like this. I have a couple of questions. One is, you were mentioning that you have in your pricing structure a national program around income qualifying households. And I think you mentioned that there's a set income. Is that a percent of AMI, or is it actually a set national income?
It's not a threshold that we set. It's a national standard. It's two times the national poverty line.
Okay. And then I'm just sort of curious, so what kind of timeframe would this be to get started? And then once you start, how does it sequence? Do you, like, do little discreet areas of the city come online with it being an option? Like, what does the rollout look like? And then what would be the timeline? Like, if, you know, when you got started, how long would it take you to get, Maria? Pop quiz, how many lane miles do we have?
I know that. About 130.
Okay.
So they actually go down each side, though, of the street?
Yeah.
Like, on a typical residential street, they won't put just one down the center. There'll be one at each essentially curb line or edge line of the street.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a good question. So, you know, for a city like the city of Wheat Ridge, you know, if we continue to work and we come to an agreement, you know, I would anticipate us starting some probably like Q1 2024. And we would probably build the city out And we would probably build the city out in probably, probably about two years. And we would build in a manner in which we kind of build big neighborhoods at a time, and then we would turn those on as we complete those. But a lot of our pace, like, to give you an idea, part of my team builds in San Antonio, and so we have as many as 12 crews working in any given day, and they do about two, they average 2,000 feet a day. So, like, that's a very, very fast, but it's, we're building in a pretty large city. So, a lot of our pace really has to do with like what the city has an appetite for. And, you know, we're building, going to be building in Lakewood, and we're going to be building in Westminster as well. So, you know, we really can flex how fast we build. When we build down a street, it's really fast to the residents on that street. But as far as like how fast we complete the city, part of that will be, you know, what the appetite of the city is for like getting the permits approved and the inspectors to close everything out, so.
Well, thank you for that. I guess, just a closing comment so I don't have to have the mic twice. You know, if Wheat Ridge moves this forward, I think it's something exciting for us to be thinking about in terms of our economic development package and how we talk about Wheat Ridge for startups, step downs, and a great place to have your business, so, thank you.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, and thank you for that question, Councilmember Hulteen, and the answer as far as the timeline goes. So, my question around that would be, are we prioritizing certain areas, or is it, you know, constituent initiated for, of interest, or how would that work?
We haven't gotten so far as to like design exactly which areas we would start from. We would likely be serving this from a facility that we're starting in Lakewood, so it might be that we start from the southern side of the city. But we really haven't gotten so far as to kind of segment our build, but that's something that we would share as we kind of, you know, get things kicked off. We would be, you know, sharing with the staff on a pretty regular basis, but then making it available, kind of our schedule and, you know, where we're going to be building it with different times, so.
I could just add one thing onto Jason's comments. When Google Fiber started, there was an idea that the company wanted to prioritize building where they knew customers would be. I remember, we were launching a service that was 100 times faster than the existing service at the time, and some people said, "Customers don't need this," right? And so, the company set out to find the customers who would value it. What we found from that exercise, which a bunch of other companies then went and copied, is that it didn't actually help us plan our build in an orderly way. It also subjected our decision-making to other forces, like who's already more connected, who's already more enthusiastic about getting this service. So, instead now, we just pick communities that we think, where we think will be successful, and that there's a need for our type of service, and we try to build as widely as possible within those communities.
I'll just add a comment so that I don't have to have the mic twice. I really appreciate the competition coming to Wheat Ridge. I think that, you know, we have a monopoly within the city and the region, and unfortunately, you can't really negotiate pricing at that rate. And as we continue to see development, particularly high-density development, I think that this is a great option. So, I appreciate your fortitude in approaching the city and kind of staying on us to get this moving.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering, what makes the decision for micro trenching in the street as opposed to the rightaway?
So, the predominant method will be in the street. It's the method in which allows us to move really quickly and less disruptive to the, and in people's yards, a lot less. So, that's our kind of default method. But sometimes there might be a street in which the street condition, you know, maybe it's a street that's going to be redone, you know, it's on schedule to be repaved in the next, or, you know, base repair and stuff like that. So, in those kind of situations, we tend to not want to be there so that we have to move it, you know, in a short period of time. So, and so, those are some of the, that's the most common thing that would cause us to kind of change our deployment method. So, what we do during our engineering phases is work with the city to understand that different infrastructure projects, maybe there, if there's some work that's going on with this, you know, with the gas lines or sewer lines or water lines. And if that's going to be happening in the foreseeable future, then we might avoid going in the street. Doesn't mean that we're, you know, not also available if there is work in the future to get things out of the way proactively, and to work with the city on a coordination basis going forward.
So, how far into the property would you be going?
So, we actually don't build anything onto the private property.
I know, but the easement could be, what is it, three, five feet, something like that?
Yeah, the typical rightaway width, it's a little bit different in every, but usually it's about three to five feet outside of the curb.
There is a huge issue about what people have in their landscape, irrigation systems, how, you know, not every house is like newer. And so, do you identify gas lines, water lines, where the tap is, all that, you know, that kind of a thing, because people are going to freak.
We do.
Seriously.
We do, so we try to gather as much of that information that we can gather. We also call and locate and have those utilities come out and mark everything. And when necessary, we actually, what's called daylighting, which we actually dig it up to make sure that we know where it is so that we're not going to, you know, strike it or damage that infrastructure relating to utilities. Now, relating to landscaping, one thing that we are committed to, and this is actually in our license agreement, is that we will restore things to the way we found it. So, if, we try to avoid landscaping, to be honest, so if we have to place a vault or, you know, something in the yard, we try to place those things strategically to avoid landscaping, but where there is landscaping, we'll put it back to the way it was.
So, if you have a street, okay, and then there's sidewalks, all right? So, then, okay, you can't do in the street, so you're going over on the other side of the sidewalk, which is part of the easement, okay? So, you are going into people's property possibly?
Usually, even beyond the behind-the-back-of-walk, there's public rightaway. So, we stay right up as close to the walk as possible, and we don't actually go onto private property.
So, how do you do this trenching? Do you pull it through, or each house, you just dig in a trench, eight to 12 inches, Steve?
So, it's the trench that goes along the street is in the street at eight to 12 inches, and then we go from the street into, and like usually between every other home, we'll go, so this is a picture showing us going down the street. But then, when we also leave a slack coil and an access point on those, in a small little vault that is in the grass behind the walk. And so, then we go through the sidewalk and the curb, and then we place that in there. So, but that's in the, that's not all the way onto the private property, that's in the public rightaway. And so, that is still at eight to 12 inches as we go through the curb and the sidewalk.
So, it's really a two-phase kind of project? So, this first effort, that's all within the rightaway, they'll put in basically the lines down the street, these small boxes behind the curb or at the edge of the property line, and then if you sign up, then you have to trench, you will come back with a separate crew-
That's right.
-and put it underground again from that box up into the house.
That's right, yeah, I apologize. Yeah, we don't go on the private property until they order service. So, if somebody orders service, a part of their service agreement, they are giving us permission to bury a cable on their property to their house. That doesn't happen until they order service.
Okay, so, like, for example, if I didn't want to have it, then I'll just have this round thing somewhere in the rightaway or whatever? You're not going from one end of the neighborhood to the far end, just digging up?
No, well, that initial construction, we go down the street, and then we place the access points along the street in between every other, roughly every other home. But, and so, you or your neighbor, like, right up next to the street, there will be a new box placed. But we wouldn't enter the actual property until, like, if you didn't want the service, we wouldn't actually bury onto your private property.
Oh, so people have a choice?
Of whether to get service or not?
To put the box?
No, the box will be there, but it's not on the private property, it's in the rightaway.
And do you ever ask people to flag their sprinklers?
So, we're pretty good at identifying where those are. If we don't, you know, see it and we do damage it, we fix it on the spot, we have an 800 number so that they can call if that, you know, if they have any kind of issues. So, we're really responsive because we want to make sure and keep everybody happy for, to try to, you know, get customers, so.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a question, anything that's kind of been asked. I think this is great. I think our constituents, our residents are kind of crying out that we need a little competition, we need a few more choices in this area, and I think our businesses are going to support this quite a bit. Can we go for a consensus to ask staff to move forward with this agreement?
I've got a few more questions.
Oh, you do? Okay.
I'm sorry. We have a number of different neighborhoods, neighborhood types. Some are a grid system with alleys and overhead utilities in the alley. A lot of them are sort of curving street neighborhoods, more recently built, have underground utilities going in there. How would you typically make the last 50 feet? Would that typically go up the alley, up a utility pole that's there, and then pole the pole and into the house, or would you?
Yeah, most, our default is to go in the roadway and then place that box in the front, rightaway. And we have, the aerial is an option, to go on the poles is an option, but we use that kind of as a last resort. We typically, it's all underground and it's in the front rightaway. We usually don't use alleyways as much. There's some kind of, there's some challenges there on, you know, garbage trucks coming down the alleyways and stuff like that. So, we, our default is in the front. But we do permit everything, so everything, and our plans are all shared with the city, and we take feedback, and if there's some changes that need to be made.
Okay. So, you would go down and be, you know, at the face of the curb, or the face of the curb pan, right? You're with the curb pan where the asphalt hits the pan, and you're out about, how wide is your trench, eight, 10 inches?
It's actually, it's usually anywhere from about 3/4 of an inch wide to maybe as much as two inches wide.
Okay.
And it is at that seam of the gutter pan and the asphalt.
Yep, and the gutter and the asphalt comes in. And you're taking it down about eight to 12 inches.
Right.
Are you putting a conduit in there?
Yes, sir.
So, typically a one-inch round or a-
It's actually smaller than that.
I don't want to get into that.
Yeah.
Menucha goes, and then, how do you, okay, so you would, you would take it and set it, is it a, I hate to say architectural grade, but I mean, you're setting a box, a recessed box in there to assess your cables at a future time? And is that a, is that a permanent nicely placed fixture?
Yes.
Okay.
And that goes in the soft scape?
And that goes at the edge of the rightaway?
Correct.
Essentially, the city's rightaway where you meet the property line?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, from there, do you typically open trench into the house or to the house, to the exterior of the house?
So, usually, what they'll use is what's called a vibratory plow. It's a, it looks like a really large lawnmower, and it has a blade that they stick down into the ground-
Okay.
...and it holds on to the cable-
Okay.
-and that, and it vibrates, and it almost like cuts the grass like a knife.
You've got a cutter with a puller.
Yeah, and it pulls the cable down underneath, yeah.
And so, you're pulling up to the front door?
It goes on the side of the home, and we put a box, what's called a network interface unit-
Okay.
-and then it comes, like, risers right up the side of the wall there-
Okay.
-with conduit, and then goes into that box there.
And how does it get inside the house?
And then, at the installation appointment, then they run that fiber into the home, and that's, goes to the place where the customer wishes to have their wireless router or wherever their equipment is in their home.
Okay, so you drill through the house and drop a wire somewhere where the router is, and the customer, your crew hooks that up and provides the router so that they've got service when they figure to pick up the telephone?
That's right, yeah. They, at that installation appointment, they get it all working, and they can use their own router, or we provide a router-
Okay.
-and then they're up and running.
Okay. And then, do they have any installation cost?
There's-
Is that built into the monthly fee, or there's no, they would subscribe to service on a monthly basis?
They would subscribe on a monthly basis, there's no installation fee, and there's also no, like, contract, like, oh, you've had this for two years and then you have to pay your way out. They could cancel the second month if they just-
So, it's month to month?
Month to month.
Okay.
Counselor Hulteen.
Sorry, I was trying to keep it to one mic, but this went on long enough, I thought of another good question. When you were talking about your street treatment process, somebody mentioned like a proprietary, like, backfill. And I'm a bike commuter, and I have been riding down 35th into downtown, and they're pipe bursting their sewer lines right now. And all of the streets I ride on are like poached hole by like their street penetrations, and I've become increasingly sensitive to like how repairs to street penetrations are done, because when I'm on my bike, it really can be pretty gnarly. So, I'm just curious, like, what is the surface treatment done on the street to like keep it as like a whole and accessible as possible?
Yeah, so that, so, if you imagine the gutter pan and the asphalt, so we cut right there at the edge, so we're, and it's filled to the surface with flowable, what we call flowable fill, and it's like a concrete, specialized concrete mixture that, and when I say specialized, it's meant to like expand and contract with the temperature, just like the materials that it's sitting next to. But it blends in really well with the gutter pan. In some cases, it looks just like an extension of the gutter pan. So, but it smoothes on the top of the surface and they, you know, it's not an indention when it's left. And also, as they're constructing, they don't leave that open. So, you know, while they're constructing, they either will fill it completely up and this stuff sets up the same day. Like, when I say set up, it means it hardens the same day. Or they will, if it, if they happen to trench a certain amount and they didn't get it finished that day, they will put the spoils back in there, so it will be filled to the top. So, there's not like a open trench going down the side of the road for bicycle, because bicycle.
Yeah, I think that's been one of staff's concerns as well, is, you know, like, if we crack seal, or sometimes patches come back from either utilities or sewer water repairs, they can start to sag or settle. That's, would be one thing, and the flowable fill, we use that in other settings. And so, with the minor, very minor width, and them using that material, we think that it will remain flush with the surface around it.
And we're also here, you know, we're going to be a long-term, this is a long-term partnership, we're not coming in to just build this and then go away. So, we're here to make any kind of repairs or anything that, you know, anybody sees that is related to our work, we're here to restore that. And that's actually part of the agreement, so.
And what sort of, where you have junction boxes and the system coming together, what, do you have large facilities that we would expect to see for that?
So, we do have a facility where we house electronics. We won't actually need one in Wheat Ridge. Those serve like as many as 60,000 homes, so it will be fed from other ones that we're planning in the area. So, what those look like, just so you know, is kind of like a building that you might see at the base of a cell phone tower. And so, we strategically purchased land or leased land for those, but we're not anticipating needing one for Wheat Ridge specifically. Now, we do place vaults that can be as, the largest is about 36 by 48 inches, and we strategically place those in the rightaway. Those are like where a bunch of fiber cables come together and splice, but that's still subsurface, so it's flush with the ground. It's a lid like you see on the side of the road. So, that's really the only thing that would be in the city of Wheat Ridge would be like the vaults and the cable that we're talking about, and then those little bit larger vaults. Usually, those are placed on the end of a block.
Okay, and that's like either a little concrete vault or a molded other kind of vault?
Correct.
And Maria, do we have any concerns when we go to rotor mill and overlay streets that this would interfere with our operations there?
Yes, so they, great question. So, they should be low enough that if we do our typical mill and overlays, that we would not be affecting that.
Okay.
The, if we do, did get into a situation where we're going deeper, let's say we're replacing water mains, or the district is replacing water mains, or if we're doing storm sewer, or we're completely rebuilding a street, and we get lower, then we would be coordinating with them to relocate their facilities, either in a temporary situation or potentially going into the soft scape in order for us to do their work, and that would be done at their expense.
Okay.
That's in the agreement as well.
And we would expect that, as you're ongoing or at the end of the operations, that we would have sort of ASBILs, and your piping would occur and show up on the mapping diagrams for our, for all of the facilities that you put together?
We do, we provide our ASBILs in a GIS format, so it can be imported into the system.
And we would have that with the utility call centers, and so we'd know where those are?
Yep, so typical of any other utility like Excel, they, if they would be registered with 811 and would need to come out and locate their facilities.
Additional questions from counsel? Do we have consensus to let this project move forward? Show of hands, looks like we do. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. I think, I think, you know, counsel has expressed the excitement that we have of having- that we have of having, you know, sort of first world-class, you know, internet connections at a reasonable price.
Great. Well, thanks for y'all's time.
Thanks so much.
Thanks so much for having us.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go to agenda, item number two. This is greenhouse gas pollution reduction roadmap. Ready roadmap?
Roadmap. Maria's firing up there.
Okay.
She's ready, so we'll get going.
All right. So, this is a very meaty topic, as you can imagine. So, this is the culmination of quite a bit of research, but it really is sort of a cutting-edge effort within the state of Colorado, led by both the state senate, as well as the governor's office, to try and address some of the greenhouse gas emissions from the various sources within the state. So, the focus of my presentation tonight, though, is going to be on the transportation sector, because that's where Wheat Ridge kind of comes in, where we can make a difference, and potentially have some items of where we can potentially make changes within our code to help address the situation. So, this started back in 2019, so not all that long ago, where, again, a bill was passed called the Climate Action Plan to Reduce Pollution, and basically was set up so that based on the levels that were measured in 2005, to set fairly aggressive reductions for the years 2025, 2030, and 2050, to reduce those statewide greenhouse gases within the environment. So, you can see there 26% reduction by 2025, which only gives us a couple of years, and then a larger goal by 2030, and then up to 90% by 2050. There is currently legislation being considered right now at the state level to, to increase that from 90% up to 100% actually by 2050. So, both Dr. Cog and CML are monitoring that, because that does get to be even more aggressive. So, out of that action, from that bill, the governor's office convened quite a few different state agencies to address how each of those separately could start to address the issue, and that's how the Gas Pollution Reduction Roadmap was developed. So, that is a document that's available online, and goes into all the various sectors, and addresses, again, like perhaps how the CDPHE, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, can address greenhouse gases. Similarly, CDOT was one of those state agencies to address it from a transportation side. And as it, we talked about, the largest impact is from transportation, and therefore, both what the C, what CDOT is doing, and through the local MPOs or local municipal planning organizations, of which we're a member of Dr. Cog, that's what we're focused on, is how we can, how we might be impacted, and how we can potentially address this as well. So, CDOT is, has met all of their, has plans to meet all of their goals for those three years through their 10-year action plan. So, they did, they publish and have done so for quite a while, is kind of look 10 years out in terms of what projects they're going to be implementing, as well as different programs. And what they're doing there now, they've gone back, they kind of reworked that somewhat to focus less on sort of capacity-expanding projects, not doing away with them entirely, but looking at more of a balance between things that provide opportunities to reduce greenhouse gases, but also then doing some of those projects. So, you can see there, if you're familiar with the bus stand, so they, that used to run primarily all the way, I believe, from Colorado Springs up to Fort Collins, with stops in a few towns in between. And they're expanding those, that bus stand routes to other areas within the, within the state. So, I believe even going down to Lamar in the southeast, out west, all along the I-70 corridor, to expand that kind of regional bus facility that really doesn't have any other provider for that, those regional buses currently. Also, transportation demand management, which is things like modifying signal timing, how they ramp metering, things like that, operational improvements within their organization, as well as electrifying some of their fleet. And then you can see some of the specific projects, again, that they've focused on, that impact Wheat Ridge include, we have, I believe, over $140 million worth of improvements going on right now that CDOT's leading within the Wheat Ridge area. And you can see there that list, and not all of those, again, are focused on greenhouse gas reductions. It's really a balance, but some of them definitely, as that bottom bullet there, they will be replacing the signals at 32nd and Kipling, and 32nd and Wadsworth, to improve the timing, to improve their, their functionality, as well as doing some ramp metering along I-70, so that all feeds back into this. And again, through these efforts, CDOT feels that they can meet their objectives for those, those future years. And then Dr. Cog, again, similarly, they had to, to prepare a plan, look at their projects, as well as their programs, to say, how can we meet these reductions in those planned years? So, they've come at it from a, kind of a three-prong approach. So, first, they looked at their projects that were already on the list within the regional transportation plan, and said, again, where can we potentially look at modifying some of these, adding specifically bicycle, bicycle lanes, sidewalk lanes, or sidewalks, as well as doing what's called complete street retrofits? So, again, kind of balancing the lane, or just expanding lanes, to also include those other facilities to encourage walking and biking, thus reducing, if we give comfortable facilities, that maybe people will get out of their cars, and instead then use alternate means to get around the city. Also, you can see their traffic signal timing, as well as, again, they're hoping to expand, even take the bus stand even further within the Dr. Cog metro area. That's essentially the Denver metro area of the seven counties within Dr. Cog. Part of Weld is also within, Weld County is also within the Dr. Cog area, and looking to expand bus stand so that there is that regional bus opportunity. And then the third prong is what's called mitigation action plan. So, these first two bullets got them pretty, almost there, and then they still had to come up with this mitigation action plan to say, how do we make up that slight difference still? So, I'll get into that in a little bit more detail here, because this is really where the city of Wheat Ridge potentially can come in. So, this just gives a summary here of what they were trying to achieve, which is the top line. So, these are all in million metric tons of that emission reductions. So, these were the goals that were set for Dr. Cog specifically, again, within the Denver metro area. And you can see by those modifications to the regional transportation plan, that's the first line, then doing those additional programmatic things like the bus stand and the TDM, it gets us so far, and then MAP still comes up with that slight difference. And then you can see with adding all three of those together, they're able to achieve each of those reduction-level requirements for those given years. And again, MAP is where the real difference comes in, and what can we do to help work towards this. First of all, though, not all of those mitigation measures that have been discussed by Dr. Cog and actually adopted by the board, they will not be required. So, this is a voluntary act by cities only. So, there's no requirement or conditions upon approval of any of our projects, or any of our funding. It really is just more of a voluntary thing. And because Dr. Cog feels like there's already good transportation planning going on at the regional level, that some of this will naturally occur, because cities are already working in this, these, this kind of thought pattern, and moving in this direction already. So, what they're talking about now is then, how do we go back and start to measure these, if there, if cities like Wheat Ridge or others are putting these measures into place, specifically doing things like increasing residential and employment densities. How do we do that as a city? We modify our zoning codes. So, I know, I think in early February, Scott Cutler and Lauren Michalak were here and talked about some of our code changes potentially. We also are coming up on a, updating our municipal, our comp plan. So, these are opportunities where we can start to have this discussion with the larger community, and incorporate potentially these modifications that eventually make a difference, because now when you have that higher density, again, people might want to walk, they're closer to the regional either bus or light rail line, and it just gives them those opportunities to get around in a different manner. Similarly, minimizing parking requirements, I know you had a discussion about that, too. That's maybe not as well, or one of the actions we might do here in Wheat Ridge, but something that Dr. Cog is proposing. And then finally, adopting local complete streets criteria standards. So, if we were to go through and, let's say, rebuild a arterial street of some sort, similar to what we're already doing on Wadsworth. So, without any, having any kind of complete streets network, or requirements, I would say that that Wadsworth is a complete street, because we have the opportunity for people to both walk and bike, good opportunities to cross it, lots of landscaping, so it's really safe for pedestrians, safe for bicyclists, and yet still serves traffic both from trucking, as well as vehicle cars and buses. So, potential next steps for the city, we can also improve our own traffic signal timing and coordination. So, we have 47 traffic signals that the city owns and maintains, and currently, you know, we've been keeping up with the maintenance, but not really doing a lot in terms of coordinating that timing. So, let's say if you're driving down 44th Avenue, and the spacing of the signals are 38th is even better, because they're spaced pretty closely, especially when you go east of Wadsworth. You, and you probably experienced this, you get up to one, one signal, and it turns red just as you get there. Then it's like, oh, I got the green, then you get to the next one, and it turns red. What we want to do is look at that timing to say, if you're traveling at whatever the speed limit is, or just under, that you can progress through those signals, and make that a more, a better timed route, so that you're stopping less, and basically having less emissions, because you have less delay. That gives more priority to a street like 38th, less to the side streets, but again, you're serving the majority of the, of the traffic, because that is on 38th as opposed to the side streets. So, we're going to look into things like that. We can also look at some of those measures that we talked about in terms of density, and those zoning requirements, and potentially also looking at complete street standards within the city. Dr. Cog's developed a really extensive toolkit for complete streets, and has some, some draft policies, as well as just some, they've already looked at kind of the entire network, and said, this is what this particular street could be for the entire Denver metro area. And I'd be happy to go into more detail on that, or do another presentation on complete streets, if you want more information. So, with that, Mayor Chul, back to you for questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Maria. Questions from council? Counselor Holtein, thank you.
I will, I will.
I was thinking, I was looking at dead air there, so.
So, thank you, Maria. First of all, I worked on this all last year, and you, staff did an incredible job, I think, summarizing what, for me, has been incredibly difficult to explain to people what this is. I mean, in, in the middle of it, it was hard. Now that it's done, it's a little bit easier. But, I just, I think, I'd like to just start by saying, I cannot overstate the impact that the greenhouse gas rule has had on how transportation projects are talked about and measured. Really, before this, our principal measurement was really around throughput, secondarily, safety, sadly. And we now have transportation agencies from the state to the regional, to the local level across the state, that are measuring the success of transportation investments by the impact on the environment. So, it's, it's monumental, and the rest of the country is actually looking to Colorado, and we're really leading in that space. So, it's, it's pretty interesting. I'm, I'm going to hold back and listen more before I share too many comments, but I think one of the things that I wanted to share, like, relevant to the presentation here, so the, the mitigation action plan opportunities for us to take a look at are, are definitely important, and I'm looking forward to that conversation. I think one of the things to make note of is Dr. Cog programmatically shifted almost a billion dollars into walking, biking, transit. And so, while we can look at policies, for us to be competitive as a city, a lot of the money, so in general, transportation projects come from the local level, and the dollars come from the federal and the state, and they meet at the regional level a lot. And it's a, it's a competitive field. Wheat Ridge has done an extraordinary job competing for dollars for a transportation project. I was talking to Mark Westberg today, and he's estimating that in his tenure with the city, that we have gotten about $100 million worth of funding, which is just phenomenal. But, how our eligibility and our competitiveness for those dollars is going to be measured differently moving forward because of the greenhouse gas rules. So, projects will be scored on how well they're accommodating bikes and transit and pedestrians, and they are going to be scored about, like, how well are they reducing the vehicular impact on our transportation system? So, when we're thinking about this conversation in terms of what kind of policies, you know, serve our community well, we should recognize that that $900 million for us to be competitive for things like complete streets project, or policies, are going to make us more competitive to get those dollars, because those are going to be, things we're going to be scored on. So, I have more specifics, but I just kind of wanted to share a little bit of my passion and excitement, and thank you for bringing this forward for us to discuss.
Thank you for, thank you for wedding the conversation. Counselor Ollm.
Thank you, Counselor Holtein and Maria, for that presentation. I think one of the things that comes up a lot is reducing the parking minimums. Some cities a long, long time ago, did away with that and have parking maximums. I think as we, that's something that we should have a future conversation about. I know there's some people that, you know, don't want things to change, and some do, and, and as we look at parking minimums or parking maximums, we also need to, we need to have strong partnerships with, you know, RTD, and, and looking at some of these bus routes. We used to have a really nice bu- bus route along 32nd, and, you know, that helped a lot of the, the high school population. Easily, every day, when I, I'd bike by it, and I would see how many people are waiting in line to be on that bus. And, and that has changed since then, and that's something I don't, I'd like to really advocate for is, is that, you know, some type of, maybe they have some type of study that really looks at, like, these are areas where we have deficits in that kind of transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Counselor Weaver?
I was just curious, what, what are you hoping to get from us tonight? I, I just, because I, I think this is great, and it sounds like we need to do this if we want future dollars, and I'm just kind of curious what you would like to do.
Sure. Yeah, I think this is mostly informational. I think, you know, unless there was an outcry that, you know, there's no way, no how we want to consider this, which I, I'm not hearing. But I think it's another factor to put into our discussion, again, as we move forward with the comp plan, as well as any traffic signal projects, you know, things, again, that we can do at this local level. And I think Councilmember Holtein brings up a good point, is as we're even sifting through and, and talking about CIP priorities, how do those potentially score better, and being more strategic, I guess, in the ones where we go after grants for, that are going to align with some of these potential and the scoring procedures that Dr. Cog will use?
Yeah. Well, I just, I just wanted, in, in conjunction with this, and I, I don't think we've directly talked about it, but I do want to sort of let council know that I have a GIS class that's actually working on looking at what, what would happen if we, if we do minimum parking for certain corridors, and another one looking at, at our connectivity of sidewalks. And just so, so you all will receive maps by district of some of these issues that, that we're thinking about, both in the climate issues, and for other things that we're, we're moving towards this fall. So, you will see those presentations coming towards you in the next couple months, so.
Terrific. Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I think initially, reading through this list, I feel like the city is already taking quite a few initiatives. We've addressed the reducing parking requirements in our code for higher-density projects. We are looking at land use densities, especially around... We are looking at land use densities, especially around TOD sites, and our rezoning. And then we've discussed complete streets not only on 38th Avenue but 44th Avenue. Definitely in support of improving traffic signal timing and coordination, I think that CDOT does not do that very well, and it's extremely frustrating. And I think Wheat Ridge not only manages our streets better than Colorado does, or the federal government for that matter, but I do like the fact that this would allow us to have more money and grant opportunities in the future. I just, I worry about this tying our hands in some ways of kind of catering too much to either bicycles and pedestrian traffic as opposed to our primary use and getting about, which is cars. And the public transportation system has been woefully unpredictable and inadequate, and we see that, like Councilmember Olm mentioned, with the 32nd Avenue RTD bus stops, and I don't see that that's getting any better, and I don't see that RTD is solving for their extreme deficit issues and how public transportation is going to kind of work in the future. So that's a major concern of mine. I would want more information about complete streets toolkit for the comprehensive plan when we are undertaking that process and what that would look like. I'm assuming that specifics would come back to us at that point in time? Okay. And that's, I think, all of my comments on this.
Thank you. Let me go to Councilor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I look at the list, I feel like we've, we're kind of on the right track with a lot of the projects we're doing. I agree, we need to have a hard conversation with RTD at some point, I guess, about some of the bus routes they either have or don't have in Wheat Ridge because canceling that one on 32nd was a big mistake, I think. My biggest question, I guess, is about the improved traffic like signaling system. How much does a system like that cost? And just, I'm not asking for a specific, but like.
Sure. So I think I put this in the memo. So right now, we don't have any type of communication with any of our signals, which is really typical around the region. So a communication system essentially establishes so that you can stay in the office and you get alerts either at your desk or on your phone that a signal's gone into flash for whatever reason. And then we can immediately respond to that 24/7. We have people on call to go out and deal with that issue. So right now, we're waiting for either the PD or the public to call that in before we respond. So that will give us at least that. The program that works with our controller system for our various signals also has modules then that we can add on to that that allow us to do more things like adaptive traffic signal timing. So we would need to add cameras and then this additional module. So those are probably in the range of, you know, we would look at corridors, so like 38th Avenue is probably in that range of $100,000 to $200,000 to get that equipment and get it up and running.
That doesn't sound terrible. Do we control the signals on Kipling, like going east to west, or does that, is that all CDOT?
Yeah, so CDOT still will control the, they own the lights along both Wads and Kipling, and then they control the signal timing as well. So they will give priority to those higher volume corridors as opposed to the crossing traffic at any of our cross streets.
Okay. Yeah, I think our citizens certainly would support that, being able to move across the city without stopping at every light for ad nauseam, so thank you.
Thank you. I've got Councilor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the timing of lights. I mean, 44th and Wadsworth, you can sit there for like four minutes. That's kind of a long time, you know, if you're on 44th. So the length of how long you need to wait is an issue. That also happens on 38th where the traffic is like backed up way to Stevens Elementary. But I haven't heard anybody mention anything we're talking about now. As I'm reading this, as the Denver region continues to grow with another million residents forecast to live in the region by 2050, that's kind of a lot of people. Kinda. We're landlocked. What do we want Wheat Ridge to look like? Downtown? Highlands? To rezone vacant land or underused land just to do it for more increased density and things? We're not going to continue to be the Wheat Ridge that people move here for now or had before. So it's, we need to be thinking about all the people that are moving here and us being landlocked. We just need to say, oh, let's just increase the density and start building more and more things higher and higher. You know, we're taking something away from what Wheat Ridge is. So I do have some concerns about that, and we're always going to have cars. If we weren't, we wouldn't be having them stolen every day.
Thank you. Let's see, I've got Councilor Weaver, Councilor Hoppe, raise your hand, and then I'm back to Councilor Hulteen.
Thanks. I just do want to go back to some of the things that have been said about RTD and working with them on this, because it's not just the areas that have been cut. It's, I used to take the 38 downtown to my job all the time, and I just don't feel comfortable on that bus anymore once it travels into Denver. And I know that those are sort of issues all over, but I also feel like it's sort of an elephant in the room that isn't being discussed with RTD and, because it's a big part of, because I know a lot of us want to do our part, but I'm, I'm just, I just don't happen to be a very good bicyclist. And sort of really addressing how do we get people on, back on buses, too? Thanks.
Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maria, can you go back to your slide where you had your, it's kind of this, what you had in the memo under next steps? Oh, yep. Thank you. So, you know, it sounds like everybody is agreeing with improving the traffic signal timing and coordination. There might be some questions around the adopting the Dr. Cog related mitigation measures and around the local complete street standards, but that would go through the comprehensive plan process, and the comprehensive plan process has a massive amount of community engagement, and also we'll see it here in this setting several times. And so I think at this point to say no to it would be a mistake. I think that it should be a part of the discussion, and then, you know, we should at least allow our citizens to have that discussion and then, you know, see kind of what filters out from that. So I would just say that I support all of those that you had up there. Thank you.
Councilor Hulteen, pardon me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple more thoughts. First of all, I definitely support us looking at complete streets policies. And just a reminder to folks, it doesn't mean every street has everything on it. It means each street is evaluated for what's the best way of accommodating the modes that are most likely to use and benefit from that street. So I think, I think we would be served well by that, and I think we've done a good job with our recent 44th Avenue subarea plan and hearing from the communities along that corridor how important it was for safer crossings. With the optimization, I know that the algorithm for that really is looking at trying to make sure it's cars traveling at or below the speed limit. There's just one concern I always have is stopping cars is one way of helping make sure we don't have speeding, and we do hear a lot of concerns and complaints about speeding on our roads and the safety for both drivers and people who aren't in cars. So I would hope that as we look at that, we're trying to balance the, you know, the efficiency of a car to be able to travel at the speed limit. I have started being the least popular citizen in Wheat Ridge because I've been driving the speed limit in the left lane on 44th, and I always get passed on the right. So I just want to balance our speeding on the corridors with optimization. A couple of other things, so RTD is, has really struggled because of COVID. I work with another group that we're looking at actually bringing forward a statewide or a regional ballot initiative in 2024 to increase service for RTD. It's super complex. They are launching their optimization strategy, which would change some of the service frequency within our community, and actually Wheat Ridge is one of the beneficiaries of it. We would get more frequent service on things like Kiplane and some of our lower frequency routes like 44th would get more frequent service. So hopefully, hopefully that all helps. A couple of other things for the greenhouse gas reduction. One is actually the governor's office is updating it this year, so it is in the process of being updated. A few other things we can do as a city. One is, so TDM, which is Transportation Demand Management Programs. Last year, our legislature passed House Bill 1026, which provides incentives for providing like bus passes and different programs. So I would love for the city to look at TDM programs if we're not already. I think we can get a, are we doing that already? Good. Yay. All right, checkbox. And then one of the components of the greenhouse gas bill is the electrification of the transportation system. It doesn't get us all the way there, which is why reducing vehicle miles traveled is part of it. But again, we've talked about this, but just making sure that we're ready for the electric vehicle future. So as part of, I think, the comp plan, I think that is something that we need to be integrating is the electrification of our transportation system. And then the other thing that ties into a lot of the other conversations we're having is the land use, and I think we're doing a lot of the right things through our housing affordability, and we are really looking at our corridors for being more attractive places for investments. And when people live on transportation corridors that are served by transit, they do depend less on their vehicles and they are actually like taking cars off the road. So being part of that without losing the quality of life in our neighborhoods, that I know each of us here really loves. So I think Wheat Ridge is going in the right way. So the punchline is I would really love for us to bring forward some complete streets policies to be taking a look at. I know that's both part of the comp plan, but there's a lot of transportation decisions that are going to be made before the comp plan's adopted. So I think if we could take a look at some of those. And then for us to be really looking at electrifying our city for the future of transportation, and then just recognizing, you know, we've had some good projects. I was just writing on the Pierce Street Bike Lane today, and it's like, it's tired, like you can't even see the little bike icon in the lane, you know, because it's that old, so which is great. But, so I think refreshing some of our existing bike investments, like improving crossings using some green paint during, in the conflict zones. So we could be doing some just small things that aren't necessarily tied to the mitigations that CDOT and Dr. Cog are requiring, but just recognizing that when we're making those investments ourselves in our community, it makes it a lot easier for people to choose to not drive to. Oh, and one really quick thing, the transportation behaviors have changed in the city since before COVID, or not in the city, in the region. So we're at about the same traffic level as we were pre-COVID. However, the traffic patterns have changed. So what we used to have were these like peak commute times where like people would be driving in the morning and in the afternoon, and now what we're seeing is it's more dispersed throughout the day. People are taking more shorter trips in their own community, and those are the trips that are more easily displaced by walking, riding a bike. So we actually do have the opportunity to make it safer for people, and those are actually a lot of the trips that are creating the congestion in our city are people who are traveling like three to five miles. So anyway, we're, it's a new world, and Wheat Ridge is doing well, and this is a chance to do better. Thanks.
Thank you. Before I come back to Councilor Hutchinson, I wanted to throw in a couple of things, if I may. One of them was that, as sort of as Councilor Hulteen mentioned, to sort of highlight some of the recent successes we had, and in the last round of the Jeffco Subregional Forum, Wheat Ridge had two sort of bicycle pedestrian projects that were moving forward in that round. So I think we had the 35th Avenue Bike Way from Sheridan to Wadsworth, and then we also have East Side of Wadsworth, is that right? The multi-use trail?
No, it's Tabor.
Oh, the Tabor.
It's Tabor, yeah.
Okay. The connections over the, with a new bridge over I-70 and the Tabor Road connections for, I think, almost $15 million. So that was really great. Maria, I had one thing, electrifying our city fleet.
Yeah.
What kind of progress might we make on that front?
Yes, so one of the things we're exploring is, Excel Energy has an opportunity to look at, they have a program that we can apply for where they'll come in and evaluate our fleet and actually identify which vehicles might be opportune to be replaced with electric vehicles. So given how often they're driven, for what mileage, and then also recommend like the number of charging stations that we would need. So we're looking into that, that those upfront costs, it's basically a third-party provider that would do that analysis, but Excel would pay us back for those costs. So we're going to look into that, doing that, starting that probably later this year.
Okay. And we also have out of the, out of the Dr. Cog and CDOT budgeting sort of opportunities for fleet upgrades and those types of things?
Yeah. Mostly that's geared, most of the funding I've seen is geared towards transit right now, vehicles for electrification, less so unlike the small fleets, you know, the small pickups and sedans that we typically have. But we're always looking for those opportunities, I guess, but I think everybody else is, too. So I think a lot of that will need to come from us and just putting, you know, looking at electric vehicles as an option for our first choice when we're procuring new vehicles.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Councilor Hutchinson.
I just wanted to say that I believe I heard that Denver City Council was going to be addressing 20 miles per hour in residential neighborhoods tonight or tomorrow.
Any further discussion on this item? Public Works in the city are asking whether we should provide for inclusion or at least a study inclusion of these policy-related mitigation measures when we talk about our comp plan. Do we have a consensus to do that? Looks like we do. Okay. Mr. Roth or?
I think, Maria, anything else on that? I think that's all we were asking on this item?
On this item? Okay, thank you. Let's roll now to agenda item number three. This is about transportation funding.
Again, just a brief overview that kind of summarizes your packet material. Again, a very needy subject in a lot of ways to go with this one. So I tried to focus on opportunities, again, within the city and looking at how our partners, specifically both the federal government and CDOT, are getting transportation funding and leveraging that for efforts here within Wheat Ridge. So there are four, at the state level, four CDOT, there's four primary funds, and then the city actually takes advantage of these two through the various bills that were originally established these. We're able to get a portion of these funds specifically from the Highway User Tax Fund as well as from FASTER, which was a bill that was passed in 2009 to get money back into the city for road maintenance particularly. So those two funds, as you can see here, which range roughly over the last five years from about 1.1 million to about 1.3. Those have to go not necessarily to projects, but specifically for road maintenance. So we're required to certify that back to the state each year that we've actually expended dollars to keep our roads up, as that's one of the requirements for that specialized fund. And most of the funds, as you know, for HU2TF come from our motor fuel taxes, the state tax that's on top of whatever comes through the federal tax, as well as a portion of the vehicle registration fees, and then just some other like interest earnings and a portion of your license fees actually comes to that, too. For the state, of course, they have their state highway fund, and then they get a certain number of federal funds each year as well that comes through that federal gas tax. So again, referencing back to CDOT's 10-year plan, there's a number of projects that are identified over the next 10 years here within the Wheat Ridge area. A lot of those are A lot of those are already under construction, and again, we estimate currently that that investment is about $140 million. As we move forward, I-70 and Kipling is kind of on that outer years, 2027 and beyond. So you'll see more of that investment as they start to put money into that interchange And then specifically, you know, are there opportunities within the, for the city to this kind of build upon that kind of very monumental Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that was just passed within the last couple of years? It really was one of the largest investments in public infrastructure across the United States in quite a long time. And so we talk about that opportunity, there's like, what was it, a total of $1.9 billion? I headed in here. Trillion, trillion. I can't even think in trillions. I can barely say it. But the, it's, it really is monumental. And so for a local community, it's almost overwhelming to say, how do we start this? How do we go after that? How do we get our share of the pie? And so that's really, you know, as I think I mentioned in our previous discussion, there's money specifically within that then, it's not just one big pot, but very specific dollars set aside for different programs, because of course, they wanted to spread that around, try and hit as many areas as possible, but also then target some of that to specific areas of the of the country, as well as specific infrastructure, like ports and rail, ports and airports, for sure, so waterway ports. But also electric buses, safety, that sort of thing, as well as a lot for transit. So then, what are our opportunities within that? We're really looking at a few probably distinct opportunities, specifically this RACE grant, which, again, there's opportunities that can come for the state, but then there's some that where the local agencies can also apply directly. RACE is one of those. So Dr. Cog is kind of leading the effort here regionally to accept proposals from different communities, and then they will not necessarily endorse them, but put together a package that would then be sent to CDOT and to the federal government for potential opportunities for those RACE grants. City of Lakewood and CDOT is, has just recently submitted one for a portion of the funding for US 6 and Wadsworth Interchange. That project has increased in cost significantly, and so therefore, they're looking at RACE as a potential opportunity to make up that difference in funding, that what before was going to be borne primarily through CDOT and the city. So we have that opportunity, too, to be, to consider that for some very large projects, as well as there's some, as I mentioned there, the National Infrastructure Project Assistance. The Safe Streets and Roads for All is a great one, I think, and one that we can target specifically for some of the projects that we talked about in our, in the retreat. So sidewalk gaps, some of those smaller things, potentially even like some of the signal timing stuff, I think, might be eligible there. Definitely improved crossings. So again, it's focused on safety for pedestrians as well as as motorists. And so those are also smaller dollar amounts. I think there were, in this last round, so that's an every-year program that's going to be available for the five years of the IIJA. And so the, in this first round that just got done, I think across the nation, there were almost 700 communities that received funding through that. So I think that's a, you know, one of those nuggets that we can probably focus on if we want to go after some of these funds. And then the charging and fueling infrastructure, I think, again, that's one of those general ones, where there's maybe an opportunity, not necessarily for vehicles, but for those charging stations and how you basically, the the infrastructure to support electric vehicles, and what we might need is one there. Of course, we're already, as we talked about, we've got a lot of grants out there right now, we've got a lot of projects in the hopper. So we want to be strategic about any projects that we go after, because, again, it's on a national level that we're competing for these. So we want to make sure that it's worth our investment for the time, and so that we can reap that reward, and balance that with all of the other things that we already have going on. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maria, in in the memo, a couple of times you referenced that the the staff is is pretty much at at their capacity. And so, and of course, I support going for all of the free money that we can get, where we can get it, as long as it's, you know, worth it, as in, it pays for the time to apply for the grant, and it pays for the things we need done, and, you know, it also pays for the staff time. But if staff is at capacity, then how how do you plan on addressing that issue and being able to also go for those grants?
Yeah, I think then it'd be reprioritization, so it'd probably be, it'd be a trade-off. So doing, maybe delaying some other efforts, not necessarily things that we, you know, already have, let's say, under construction or in active design, but things that are probably on our near-term future, that we would have to put on hold in order to pursue something like this.
And when you're looking at kind of reorganizing that, or looking, reprioritizing those things, are you, where are you taking your guidance on what the priority should be? Should it, is it from the discussions we had during retreat? Is it from, like, our goals that we had, that we have set up for the next couple of years, or is it what staff you have available?
Yeah, and I'm sure City Manager Goth can weigh in here, too. I think that would be a larger discussion than just, you know, within Public Works and Community Development. I'm guessing that that would probably be a discussion with council, you know, before we made that decision. But it would be factors like that, is what could we put on hold potentially, you know, and the kind of the consequences or pros and cons of doing something like that.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Rome.
Thank you, Mayor. One question I have is, it talks about the the taxes from fuel, and have you noticed, or do you predict, as we start to electrification, that that number starts to go down? And what is the, you may not have an answer for this, but what is the, what does the future hold, if that's where we're getting all our taxes for doing these projects?
Yeah, great question. And that's exactly what, you know, the future holds for us. As fewer miles get driven potentially, as we get more electric vehicles, of course, the fuel, or the taxes on the fuel. So if electric vehicles don't pay that tax, so there's got to be another means of collecting that same amount of money or more if we want to invest, continue to invest in our infrastructure. So as we go to more electric vehicles, that revenue source is going to dry up. So there are different states. I believe Oregon is one of them who's looking at more of like, a miles-driven kind of a of a tax, where you would look at your odometer in some fashion, whether it's an electric vehicle or a regular vehicle, to note that difference. And so the more miles you did, you would basically be taxed on that as opposed to fuel. But it is a longer, or not even really that long of a term, because I think we're already starting to see that across the country, is that those fuel levels, or the tax levels are either staying level or going down because of that.
And then my other question is, is relating to the grant process, does the, does your, does the city evaluate which grants have the higher chance, like, do they, do they go through, like, a process? You know, kind of like, you know, like, does this make sense? And I don't, and the other question, I guess, is, that kind of pairs with that. At the end of the year, do you ever do, like, an assessment and see, like, okay, we've spent X amount of hours, you know, to chase after these many grants, and we got, we only got this portion, you know, in some way, maybe had a higher chance or lower chance? Kind of a...
We haven't done that type of analysis. I think right now, I, we did do some of that, you know, discussion before we went into this last round of tip funding for Round Four, which just wrapped up with these last two projects that were awarded to the City of Wheat Ridge. It's, it's, we're also contemplating a couple of others as well, and so I think that could get more robust internally as to how we do that. Right now, there's, there is a lot of money out there, and so it's relatively easy. When that, those sources start to dry up, the competition will increase. So then we're going to have to be more thoughtful about where we put our efforts in, because we might not be as successful as we have been in the past.
Yeah, it's something that, in the private practice, is is something that that occurs a lot, of trying to figure out, you can't chase every R and P, and so you got to figure out how to, how to do it, some type of evaluation.
And many of the grants, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Maria, I think they're the ones through tip process, Dr. Cog, they, you can score them before you apply to see if it, if you're going to get a high enough score. And we do that analysis, and then if you overmatch, also, you have a better chance of getting certain grants. So I know Mark Westburg doesn't, hasn't done a really good job about scoring before we decide if we're going to even submit or not, see if we have a chance.
Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you. This is, this is like my favorite, this is, that's why I love talking, it's my favorite night. So, I mean, I know that there's, like, the the federal discretionary grants, there's like, a federalized burden for them, and so that's always something I think about. For infrastructure, it seems, seems worth it. A couple of the grants, like the Safe Streets and Roads for All, actually, is, there's a planning grant part of it, so it's divided into two. There's one for implementing, but you actually have to have an adopted Vision Zero plan in order to be eligible for the implementation grants. So I know that there's been some talk at the county level for Jefferson County to be doing its own Vision Zero, so I would just encourage us to encourage the county, because at that scale, it's, doing regional work actually is is really great. And if if Jefferson County adopted a Vision Zero plan, then we would be eligible for implementation underneath that. So so sometimes scaling at the regional level is is definitely good. We, when, when we're evaluating these and having to use our our local match, how how do we budget that? Because that's the thing in in my other hat, my helmet that I wear, that always comes up as as one of the limiting factors for communities. They may have the staffing capacity to apply for the grant and administer it, but like, timing, setting aside enough local match, especially for infrastructure projects, is is, so how how do we, as a city, while we still have a couple more years of IJA funding, how are we prioritizing that local match piece so that we're we're ready for the awards when they roll in?
Yeah. We've been able to, at least for the last, the grants we've gotten over the last several years, we've been able to provide that match in our CIP budget. Thankfully, we've had enough reserves to, if needed, transfer additional funding from the general fund to the capital project for those matches. But, yeah, without identifying, we, I guess, to answer your question shortly, we don't have a set-aside line item for just general matches, right, for potential future grants. We, we always have a pretty healthy reserve, I think, that we could always use for those. But maybe we could, if we, if we started identifying more grants more proactively, we could start budgeting for just general matches to be prepared proactive, proactively.
Great. And then just the other piece I'll add is having worked on several of these grant applications for other community, other, I'm cheating on Wheat Ridge, I'm working on them on other communities. Under the IJA, a lot of the eligibility guidance really emphasizes community-informed and like, a diversity of stakeholders, and then diversity of people benefited by it. So I just want to state, I think Wheat Ridge is in a really great position with the work that we've done the last couple of years around community engagement, and I think that's part of our strength in in going for these funds. I just want to recognize staff and my peers for getting us to a place where we've really got some good community-informed projects.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Shouldn't there be some money out there with late vehicle registration fees that's being implemented now?
It's part of the FASTER that Maria mentioned. We get, we do get revenues through that. I think they've lowered those fees or fines over the last couple of years, haven't they?
No, this is just new.
A new one?
This is a new thing.
Late fee.
Late fee. Well, they implemented, part of FASTER was late fees, wasn't it, on registrations? But is there a new one now? Oh, is there? Okay.
All the registration.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's part of the, we get that, it's part of our HU2TF.
Thank you. Maria, I had a question. I-70 and Kipling, probably the, one of the largest projects, road projects that we have in town, the, the sort of the full build budget is about 70 million now, and it looks like that CDOT is sort of proposing about a $30 million sort of, sort of short project or an interim project, and do you think there's a way to get that back to the full build? It, it comes out, you know, it comes out in the last half of the of the 10-year plan.
Yeah. Yeah, so the intent isn't that it would be constructed or or funded fully within the 10-year plan, it would basically get us started. And as you can imagine, and as we've experienced with Wadsworth, is it going to be 70 million in, you know, seven years from now? Most likely not. So we're definitely, it's something we're talking with them about, is keeping that on their radar. That bridge over, that track carries I-70 over Kipling is in very poor condition. And so they, they've got it identified as well, and that, we're also talking about some interim, kind of early action measures potentially, to do at that, that that interchange that could improve both safety and capacity in the short term.
Okay.
So there's some of those discussions going on, but we will continue to push for full funding of that, of that intersection.
I think that really opens up the, opens up our commercial corridor with those, with that additional traffic signal south of I-70, and I think that's a, could be a key to kind of making that a successful corridor.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other additional discussions on transportation funding? And I guess staff is looking for direction to to continue pursuing grant funding in the transportation realm. Do we like that? I think we've done really well lately, and congratulations to our staff, and I think we'd like to continue. Go. Those.
So if we were to prioritize the I-70 and Kipling interchange, what would some of the trade-offs be or have to be? Because I know that that's a large-scale project, but I I agree with with Mr. Mayor that it would be really helpful for that corridor and and the problems that we see in that area, if we can move that along.
Yeah, I think we'd, we, we'll probably take this feedback and probably discuss that with CDOT internally about how we do that, and what that would look like. And if we were to, you know, advance that more, what would that timeframe be that we'd be looking at?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on transportation? Maria, you had a big night tonight?
Thank you.
You've gone three for three, so it's a pretty good, pretty good batting record, if you'll, in in the preseason.
It is preseason.
Okay.
Spring ball.
Let's see. We have one of my favorite staff reports.
I do have something tonight, very quickly. I left a couple of documents on your, in front of your chair tonight. These are some collateral materials that we're preparing for our trip to National League of Cities next week, as you know. Four of your council members are attending that, myself. And I did mention, I gave you an update, I think, last week or the week before, about the congressionally-directed spending requests that we were making with, to our Congress folks, our our federal delegation. The first one we talked about was to fund our naturally occurring Affordable Housing Program through, which was a recommendation in our Affordable Housing Strategy. We submitted those to both Senators Hickenlooper and Bennett and Congresswoman Pedersen. We already heard back from Bennett's office that unfortunately, the way our request was drafted, it's not eligible for funding because it's basically considered microgrants, because we would be giving money to private apartment owners to to incentivize them, to upgrade them, to keep rents low. HUD does not fund those types of microgrants. So the good news is, though, they said they're going to help us attempt to find other grants that might be, that might work in the meantime, and then work with us to apply for grant funding next year, where we could potentially work with somebody like Foothills Regional Housing, where they actually acquire an apartment building or a hotel, a motel, and the funding would be eligible for something like that. Foothills didn't have anything in the works right now, they did just purchase a building in Wheat Ridge, a 2020 unit apartment building that they're going to renovate and maintain low, low rents there. So that's an option in the future. We haven't heard back from Hickenlooper and Pedersen's office, so I believe Bennett's office knows that that funding is probably not eligible. But we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and bring this with us, and the funding request is still on the back sheet. And I have, we have a bunch of these. If you would like extra copies of these, this is just an executive summary of our affordable If you would like extra copies of these, this is just an executive summary of our affordable housing strategy. If you're getting questions from your constituents, you want to hand these out, let us know. We have about 100 of these, we can make more copies. Um, and the other congressionally directed spending request that we did mention was for the Makerspace Program. They are very excited about this one. Um, they're going to, uh, push this, Bennett's office is going to push this grant request. We're asking for 200,000 to buy equipment for the, um, make, new Makerspace, um, and some programming. So, um, this is a one, one pager on that. You're welcome to share with anybody you'd like to. So any questions on that? Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Um, elected officials' reports? Anyone got something? Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention, um, last week, Color Strand had its celebration of life. Um, the, we, uh, we had about, I don't know, 200, 300 people there, uh, from students who were in the original classes at Color Strand in 1962, all the way up to students who are there now. I was pretty honored to get up and have an opportunity to speak, uh, just because as somebody who went to Color Strand as a kid, now as a parent and somebody who's taught there, um, it's an amazing community and the teachers and principal and everybody there did a phenomenal job putting it together. So I just want to thank them and, and, uh, say goodbye to Color Strand. We've only got another month and a half left.
Okay. Thank you. Additional, uh, elected officials' reports? Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. Coming back to my clerk. Thank you. Just wanted to let you know, we have recently attended yet another two or three presentations by the Wheat Ridge Community Theater. What's happening is they're getting better and better and better as time goes by. Most recent one was the best one we've seen yet. So I'm going to renew my request that you look into attending something over there. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is I don't know how many of you saw the media reports. We have discussed in here, well, not we, you have discussed in your street racing on several occasions. There's a news report out there that says, very recent, last weekend, a group of people decided that they would meet at Anderson Park and have a street race. When they got there, some of Wheat Ridge's bravest and finest citizens were waiting for them and they shut them down. I don't know what kind of intelligence PD collected to do this, but man oh man, that is outstanding work by our people. All right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very good, thank you. Is anything else to come before us tonight? Seeing none, we will adjourn our meeting. We will not be here next week, but we will be here the following week in a study session. So, uh, travel safely through our streets and, uh, out of our state and come back and we will be here again. So thanks to everybody.